Good evening and welcome to the Isleta Independent School District's Video Conference Meeting of the Board of Trustees. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comment electronic sign up cards show the rules for participating at the in the electronic post posting of our meeting. Your comments will be read out loud. Legal, the board may listen but may not enter, may not enter into discussion on the issue raised. The Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:00 P. M. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, Soltero Ramirez, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, Catherine Lucero and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Richard Kudair will not be in attendance. Christine Lucero, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Now for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. Tonight, we not have any citizen inputs, so I will go right onto the action items. Unfortunately, as a result of an error in hiring process and in accordance with the policies, policies BBC and DBE legal, Mr. Richard Kudair, Board Vice President, submitted his resignation on Friday, May 8th. Although this is a significant loss for our board, the ethics demonstrated by Mr. Kudair is definitely above reproach. The Board of Trustees now has to make the difficult decision to replace Mr. Kudair, either by appointment or by calling a special election, as per Board Policy BBC. Action item number one, acceptance of resignation of trustee Kudair. Is there any discussion?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that how sad I am that this has happened, that Mr. Kudair will be very, very missed on our board. He was a very good board member who took the whole district into consideration when he was making decisions and, and all the things that he did. And I just want to say that he's going to be missed very much from our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Ms. Catherine, Catherine, go ahead.
I want to, I want to piggyback on Connie's sentiments. His, Mr. Trustee Kudair has been an excellent, excellent board member. Serving with him, learned a lot through the process. He's, he's a very, very well versed on, on academics and it's really hard to replace that kind of knowledge on our board. It's been an honor to serve with trustee Kudair. He led with integrity, honesty, and always student and employee centered. And he is going to be very much missed.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other discussion? I, I myself, I'm sorry to lose Mr. Kudair. He was my vice president, but more, more so he was my friend. And I know he would do well, you know, he will do well wherever he goes. And I just wish him good luck and anybody else? If not, no further discussion, may I have a motion? Ms. Woodruff? We have, we have a motion mine with Connie Woodruff.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I move to accept the resignation of Richard Kudair as trustee for District Three and as Board Vice President effective immediately.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Bustillos, we have a second. All right. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I, trustee Ochoa, vote yay. Results, six in favor. Not opposed. Action item number two. Discussion and possible determination on process to fill board member vacancy. Is there any discussion? I do have some questions on this. I was sent the document just earlier and it has kind of like a timetable and some of our options. Did you all receive that? Did you? Okay.
No.
You didn't receive it?
I did.
Monica, did you send it to Mr. Rosales?
Yes, sir. I can
Yeah, what time you sent it, Monica? About 4:30.
Maybe about 30, 25 minutes ago.
Okay, yeah, so I left.
Okay. So we have, as you can see, we have several options. We can do it by appointment, by election. Election, I think, is not in question right now because we had one more year left. I mean, it was coming up for reelection in May of '21. And so that's one year. And it would be very costly for the district to hold elections for this position. So my, my view on this is that we should probably do, do it by appointment. Now, doing it by appointment is, is a process that has been done before, before, before I was in the board and I'm sure some of you were, maybe you got to experience that. We can do it by appointment. We can, let's see, we appoint, we can do it as a quick process or we can wait until next board meeting or we can call a special meeting to do so. My, and this is just my, okay, it's not, has nothing to influence the board. It should just wait till Wednesday and if anybody has any other ideas, then we can bring it up on that time. Or if you have any ideas about it right now, which would be a good time too, since this is a workshop. So that is my point. Does anybody else have any, any, anything that they want to say?
Can we, is Safi or one of the attorneys on the line with us? I think it'd be a good idea for, for anybody watching in the public to be able to hear the process, to understand it for transparency and, and to just go over, are we going to advertise online? That's, that's how I came on board when I first started as a board member. I was appointed and there was a process to write a letter and then there was a brief timeframe and then that board at the time, that body voted. If we could just go over that a little bit to have some, some, some transparency for the public.
President Ochoa? This, this is Anthony Safi.
I can respond to Ms. Lucero's question. As, as President Ochoa explained, the board initially has a choice, fill by election or fill by appointment. The election couldn't be until November of 2020, which means that you would have the vacancy in that position all the way until November. And then that election would only be valid until May of 2021, when that position would come up again. So you'd end up having two elections within about six months. By appointment, on the other hand, the appointment would be valid until May of 2021, the regular time when this position's term would expire and it would be up for election again. The appointment process is really legally, it's whatever the board wants to do. There is no legal requirement that the board advertise the position, that the board solicit letters of interest, that the board conduct interviews and so forth. The board has done that in the past. It can do that if it, if it wishes. On the other hand, if the board simply wanted to make an appointment at a meeting where the subject was properly posted, the topic was properly posted on the agenda, the board could do that. The board is not legally required to go through the process that trustee Lucero explained. Although that has been, that process or something similar has been done in the past, it's not legally required. Does that respond to your questions, business sir? Okay.
I must, anybody else have anything to say? I do have one bit of information for the board. I did receive a letter of interest. And that was sent to me by Shane. He, he was on the board several years ago and he he sent me a letter of interest. So if you would like to consider that, it's, it's up to the board. We can bring that up on Wednesday or however you choose to do. Yes, Ms. Woodruff?
Um, I was wondering, would it be possible for us to receive copies of that letter? So that we can get that?
I will send it to you as soon as possible. As soon as we get off, I'll mail it to all of you, if that is legal. But, or
Let's find out if that's legal.
Mr. Dr. De La Torre can send it to you. He has got a copy.
All right.
That'll be probably better.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So based on that, there's no further discussion. May I have a motion? It's on
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes.
I move to approve that the board will fill the vacancy and position a trustee for District Three by appointment until the next regular District Three election in May 2021.
May I have a second?
Second.
Rosales, second. Okay. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
How do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I, trustee Ochoa, vote yay. So the results are six in favor. None opposed. Okay. Do you have presentations for us this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board. We have three presentations, two by internal staff and then Mrs. Arlinda Valencia would like to address the board surrounding Isleta's goal standard. But before we do that and because there is a natural and inherent relationship between the next five-year strategic action plan, the encore, and the budget that we develop over time and hope to put forth tonight so that you can see the relationship between what it is we hope to accomplish over the next five years and why those strategies outlined in the strategic action plan are critical to meeting your goals, your targets and the goals, accomplishments, achievements that we want for our student. With that, I'll turn it over to Lindley, who is going to likely take over the screen and you should see a presentation.
So Ms. Monica, the host has disabled screen sharing. Can you enable that?
Yeah.
Still not enabled. Hector, do you have the ability to override it?
Maybe Monica? Please, share screen is
And you are the host for the meeting, correct, Monica?
Want me to turn that over to you?
No, well, it doesn't matter. I have the presentation, but as long as the host has disabled screen sharing, no one else in the meeting will be able to share anything.
It's located right in the middle at the bottom, Monica. It says share screen.
Yeah, it says one can share. Let's see, try that.
That will allow you to share. I can send the presentation to you if you'd like and you can broadcast it.
You'll find the share screen right next to the participant's number.
I think she needs, I think she needs to move the host over
Access now. Thank you. There we Well.
Perfect. Oh, we were in, we were displaying it.
I can see it.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes, perfect. Okay. So, good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board and Dr. De La Torre. Through the leadership of Dr. De La Torre, in 2020, a renaissance of excellence was implemented. And over the last five years, we've accomplished the boldest strokes of that plan, clearing the path for future academic achievement, which is the aim of Vision 2025. There you go. Vision 2025, the encore. And so in phases one and two, we developed a strategic framework and a five-year plan. In phase three, we'll implement, monitor and evaluate the data to ensure we're on track for delivering the results at the end of 2025. Although COVID-19's emergency has rendered an unprecedented challenge for our teachers, students and Isleta community, the teachers in the four corners of the classroom and administrators have persevered with grit through the transition from classroom instruction to distance-based learning. And I feel confident that any challenges presented in the near future will be met with the same grace. The three board goals can be summarized under our future, number one, which relates to student performance. We want to see students increase their academic achievement in all assessed areas, continuously improving their content mastery. We want our students to graduate from, from high school as either college, career or military ready. In order to do that, we have to hire the best and the brightest employees. And not only do we hire those, but then we have to empower them to deliver real-world experiences and we have to support them not only physically, but emotionally and intellectually as well. And then finally, our investment represents the district's resources being utilized effectively and efficiently to provide facilities that are safe and well-maintained, as well as meeting the needs of today's learners, while at the same time respecting the taxpayers' investment. So how will we accomplish board goal number one? We'll look to 13 essential areas for success and these areas range from the balanced literacy framework to the dual-language model and the initiative to ensure that every student has a device. Then through the best practices in reading and writing, mathematics, science and social studies, we'll ensure their academic achievement in those areas. We want to ensure that all students are socially and emotionally prepared to learn as well. And finally, as they advance into the secondary level, we want to see success in the advanced placement programs, the dual-credit and dual-enrollment program, House Bill Five endorsements and industry certifications, as well as success on the PSAT, SAT and TSI exams. When we look to goal two and the essential areas will monitor for success there, we're looking for employee satisfaction. Much of that will be gauged through the employee engagement survey, but also through looking at the grievances that are filed on an annual basis. We want to know that the employees in the field feel that they have the support from leadership and from central to ensure they can carry out the tasks they've been assigned with. We'll also look at district services survey, which represents what the campuses feel they're receiving from central administration and other support departments. And then finally, we'll gauge parent satisfaction to ensure that parents are excited about sending their children to school in the district and that they're achieving the gains that we expect. With regard to board goal three, this looks at first fiscal resilience. We want to ensure that the board, the district has the financial wherewithal, sorry, I have a hailstorm starting here, the financial wherewithal to meet the needs of the future, ensuring that whatever challenges present themselves, we have the financial basis to succeed. We want a facilities master plan that is a living document with at least a 20-year outlook and that engages not only our deferred capital maintenance, but long-term capital improvement. And then finally, we want to implement with fidelity the 2019 bond program. So while this plan reflects the bold leadership of our ambitious leader, Dr. De La Torre, it's also supported by not only his cabinet, but administrators and the teachers in the four corners of the classroom. And with that, I can take questions or comments. Let me stop sharing this screen to give you a moment. Are there any questions or comments?
Lindley?
Yes, ma'am.
Connie Woodruff. When I read through the booklet that was sent out, the thing that I really liked about it was that when we saw these things come before us before in, back in, what was it, March? Or maybe February? It seemed like there was a lack of including the pre-K and the kindergarten and the first and second grade and those early childhood initiatives. And I saw it laid out on the, in that book. It gives the exact things that they're going to do in those grade levels too. And I feel like that really helps our whole district as far as, we, we know that we're starting from our youngest students all the way to our oldest and trying to provide for everyone. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Are there any additional comments, questions? Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. And if it's all right, I'll move forward with the budget presentation. All right. Won't let me have it. Give me just a second. Here we go. So as we talked about in the strategic plan, it's necessary to have a budget that supports that. So as we walk through the overview of the proposed budget this evening, you'll see the elements supporting that plan and we'll talk just briefly about those as we move through it. So within the salary and benefits element of this budget, there's a 2% of midpoint increase for all full-time employees. Additionally, the one-time lump sum payment of $500 that issues just before the winter break is included. And as we mentioned in our discussions about the new employee health benefit solicitation, there will be a 3% increase to employee healthcare premium. The district will match this 3% increase, but of course, the district's increase to, or the district's contribution to the employee health benefits program is much larger than the individual employees share. Other elements included within, in the budget are 1.7 million for student devices, a million dollars for reading academies mandated under House Bill Three, a million dollars for the final year four of our elementary furniture refresh, as well as a million dollars for the purchase of buses and white fleet maintenance. And then we have band and orchestra instrument refresh, CTE robotic support, mariachi uniforms for Bel Air, Eastwood and Del Valle High School, as well as stop the bleed kits for every campus. Here you can see the budget as proposed by fund and function. The entire budget is $489.6 million as proposed. Of that, roughly 65% is dedicated to instruction or academic achievement. 84% of the budget is invested in our people through salaries and benefits. And then finally, it's easy to see that the entire 489.6 represents our responsibility to the taxpayers and to our students and Isleta community. If the board moves forward with approving the budget on May 13th, that will be the final action for this piece. And then in August, we'll come back to you to request your approval of the tax roll and the tax rate. If the board declines to take action on the budget on Wednesday, then we would come back to you in June and request your approval at that time because by June 30th, we must adopt the new budget in order for the fiscal year to begin on July 1st. And with that, I'll also stop sharing and give you a moment to ask questions. Are there any questions or comments? See, Ms. Lucero?
I wanted to thank you, Lindley and the Cabinet of De La Torre for including reference to COVID-19 in our strategic plan, then ties into the budget. For this particular budget with the changes due to COVID-19, are, do we have amounts in there that reflect the changes that we're going to have to probably take on in this upcoming school year, be it checking kids' temperatures? I mean, all of the changes that might occur, I won't, I won't go through each of them because honestly, I know that we're still working on some of the, some of the things. But do we have funds in place in the budget for those costs that, that we didn't expect?
So Ms. Lucero, we do have over 60 days of unassigned fund balance available and that is for events of emergency. So it, it's intended to cover at least 60 days of all operating expenses and we have at least that surplus in the budget. We know that there are new and unexpected expenses coming up. There's nothing out there that we believe would derail this budget. As it's proposed, we believe we'll be able to accommodate the demands for sanitization of campuses, for children, whether they are all in the classroom at a time, whether we have to separate them, whether we have to move teachers to classrooms versus students moving from classroom to classroom. There are many considerations underway even at this time, but there's nothing expense-wise that we think will cause this proposed budget not to proceed without hindrance.
Okay, no, I just want to ensure that there are enough funds available in this budget that will, that we won't necessarily need to dip into the fund balance, that we have enough in place. I know that there's emergency funds and then just things, because this, I guess, is our new normal. So I just wanted to make sure we're covering that. Thank you.
I have a question. I've been reading about the federal funding, especially for the COVID-19, to cover some of the costs for the schools. Is that anywhere near resolution?
So we are certainly tracking all of those eligible expenses. We've set up accounting codes that are strictly We've set up accounting codes that are strictly applied so that every time we make a purchase, we designate it as a COVID-19 expense, and we are submitting already expenses and purchases for FEMA reimbursement. So there is definitely offset there, but I will tell you quite frankly, we don't bank on that. We want to be able to be self-sufficient, so we monitor and plan for those expenses to come from us. And if we're able to recover from FEMA or the state, then we'll be glad to take it, but we don't want to rely on that.
Thank you. No further questions? Comments? Dr. De La Torre?
At this time, I'd like to invite President Arlinda Valencia to share her thoughts and comments with the board under the umbrella of Aslata's gold standard. Ms. Valencia?
Thank you. Good evening, President Ochoa, Dr. De La Torre, and Board of Trustees. I'm Arlinda Valencia, President of the Aslata Teachers Association, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of all the members. I'm here to say thank you once again for being the best leaders in education in the El Paso region. In the past month, this board has made some difficult decisions, and they have been made in the best interest of the district and its employees. Today, you will be reviewing the budget for this coming year, and I must congratulate you once again on keeping employees and students at the top of your list. In this budget, there is a 2% increase and a $500 stipend for all employees across the board. I am informing you that of all the years in the past, this year is very crucial. The employees of this district have earned this raise and should receive it. Due to the COVID-19, teachers especially had their world turned upside down overnight. They left their students during spring break without knowing that they would not be returning. They had to deal with the fact that they would not be getting those last nine weeks with their students, which included the last fun days of field trips, award ceremonies, proms, yearbook signing parties, and of course, graduation. Instead, instead, they were asked to change everything they knew about teaching and were thrown into the world of unknowns. Teaching online was not what they signed up for, but that is what was on the table. Teachers who are not technologically savvy had to embrace this new way of teaching very quickly. They had to learn new applications in order to communicate with their students. I'm a retired technology teacher, and I had to learn Zoom, Google Hangout, and other applications. For the inexperienced teachers, I can only imagine the fear that they suffered learning programs through a computer screen. I have to thank Aslata for doing a great job in making sure that all of our employees are professional development in order for them to do what they needed to do. And please do not forget our ancillary staff. The custodians and the cafeteria personnel have actually put their lives on the line. Cafeteria staff have risked their lives in order to help feed our students, who would not have anything to eat if it weren't for their dedication. The custodians have been working so hard to make sure that our schools have been sanitized for teachers to feel comfortable returning to their classrooms to pack. During the crisis, this administration has asked teachers, administrators, ancillary, and central office staff to step up and to take on some new challenges. And for that, I am proud to say that your employees did it. Aslata ISD has successfully prevailed over the trials and tribulations of having to deal with virtual teaching. The one great realization that has come through loud and clear is that many parents have learned to appreciate teachers far more than ever before. The other day, I was watching the news, and a female governor was being interviewed about being a potential candidate for Vice President of the United States. One of the questions was, do you believe you are qualified and can do the job of being the Vice President of the United States? This was her response. Yes, I'm qualified. I know I can do a good job of being President, Vice President of the United States. Now, don't ask me if I can teach my four children at home. That's another story. But yes, I can be the Vice President of the United States. Can you believe that? Her conclusion was that being Vice President of the, of the United States is way easier than being a teacher. With that answer, let me remind everyone that teaching is no picnic and that it's not for the faint of heart. Now ask yourself, have these employees earned 2% raise? Should they continue to receive a $500 stipend? I believe that they've earned way more than that. But if the district believes that this day and time, they can afford a 2% increase and $500, I'm happy to accept that for the employees of the district. And if you are still having doubts about voting for this salary package, let me remind you of something else. Many of your employees have spouses that have lost their jobs. Many have had to make ends meet with one check, not two. Those families may say that this salary package is not enough. But I'm saying that the district cannot pay for an extra check, but the salary package can help these families buy food and some, pay some bills in order to have them survive. And if that isn't bad enough, if you decide not to increase their pay, you will be hurting the employees more this year, because you will be lowering their pay. Instead, because employees will be getting an increased cost on their new insurance premiums. If this salary package fails, employees will be receiving a salary decrease of 3%. Some of you may say that it's not this year, for, many of you will say that this year's not the right year to be given a raise, because they aren't sure of state funding and how it will be in the next couple of years. Let me say that in all the years in this business, I have never had the state reduce funding that has already been approved. The money for House Bill three is permanent, and it's guaranteed for the next year. I trust that the district knows if it can afford the razor line. For the board to make a decision on trying to guess what will happen in 2021 is like using a crystal ball in order to see the future. I'm sorry, but I only deal in facts. Forecasting the future shouldn't be on anyone's radar. That crystal ball stuff doesn't work for me, and it shouldn't be working for anyone else. Let's not, let's not forget the story about Chicken Little and the sky's falling, because that only makes people scared to do the right thing. I'm hoping that this board will make their decision on what is before them tonight, not on what is unforeseen in the future. The YSD employees are grateful for all that you have done in the past, and I hope you will vote for the salary increase. In return, employees will be proud and will continue to support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valencia. If they have any more questions, we shall proceed. We will now discuss the agenda items as listed in the posted notice of regular meeting of Aslata ISD Board of Trustees for May 13, 2020, and recommended motions with the superintendent and executive cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action at the May 13, 2020 regular Board of Trustees meeting. Consent items, consent item number one. Any, uh, anything that you want to say, please raise your hand. Somebody noticed there was a hand, because I'm trying to read this. I'll catch you. Board of Trustees, number one, Board Workshop by video conferencing, April 13, 2020, 6:00 PM. Board of Trustees, number two, Board of Trustees Board Meeting by Video Conference, April 15, 2020, 6:00 PM. Consent item number three, contract number 98-850-428, Region 19. Consent item number four, naming of the new middle school in the Hanks Learning Community.
Mr. Ochoa, this is Connie Woodruff. Um, I'd like to move that item to the, to the regular, pull it off with the consent for a separate motion, so that we can thank the people who served on that, on that committee to name the school, and also so that we can let Mr. Ochoa make the motion to have that, so.
Thank you for that, Ms. Woodruff. We will pull that off and pull it for a separate vote. Consent item number five, approval of request for TEA waiver for school days. Consent item number six, approval of request for TEA waiver for CPR training in high school. Consent item number seven, approval of request for TEA waiver for armed services vocational aptitude battery ASVAB test. Let's see. We'll move on to the action items. Number one, adoption of 2025 strategic plan for the district, including board calls. Number two, adoption of the 2020-21 official budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull that, please.
There's been a request to pull an agenda item, I mean, an action item off?
Mr. Mr. Ochoa, I believe we need to go ahead and vote on this budget and go ahead and move forward. I think right now is a time when, when our, our kids, our parents, everybody's feeling shaky and, and I feel like this is a time when we need to show the, show our resolve and show that we are, that we are going to be kind of like a rock for them in this case, and give them a little stability in a time when it's, it's very unstable. So I would prefer that we go ahead and vote on this item on Wednesday.
I don't see a purpose to pull this item at this time. We need to move forward and get the budget, show our district some stability as we move forward. There's going to be uncertain times, and we need to, we need to show stability to our, our employees, students, and our community.
Any else?
I agree. I think we need to vote on this. We need to show our teachers that we back them 100% in these uncertain times. We really need to get this thing going for our, our teachers and all the employees at the district.
Okay. Ms. Austin, you had something to say? How do we handle this?
Yes, thank you. In terms of pulling things, that's to pull from consent and move it to action. That can be done tonight. As for, or a request for that can be done tonight. Tomorrow, if you, in order to actually postpone an item, there would have to be a motion tomorrow to postpone or table that item.
On Wednesday.
On, I'm sorry, Wednesday. Thank you.
So the, the items on the agenda until Wednesday.
It's on the agenda until Wednesday, and so if, if that motion wants to be made on Wednesday, then the board can vote yes or no on whether to postpone the item on Wednesday.
Okay. Any more questions? On the agenda until Wednesday, and then we can make a decision on that. Number three, approval of construction methodology for BP 1909A Capistrano Elementary School renovations and upgrades project.
Mr. Ochoa, I have a question about that one. Can we kind of get an idea of exactly what construction that they're going to be doing on Capistrano?
Ms. Lindley?
Yes, ma'am. So Capistrano had life cycle renovation scheduled in the 2015 budget, and it was for very nominal construction improvements, replacement of water fountains, and some nominal work like that. But when we passed bond 2019, then we included the conversion of the swamp coolers to refrigerated air, the safety and security vestibule, and some other improvements like that. And what we're finding is that because of COVID-19, construction companies are reluctant to bid by CSP and lock in a price for many months in advance, not knowing what the market will do and what manufacturing will do. And so by using this methodology of a C-MAR on it, then we have the opportunity to phase it in different packages. So we can do a demolition package, and we can do a steel package, and we can do concrete packages. And so that allows them to be flexible as the market changes. But in terms of the construction, we're going to bring the front entry out and add that vestibule there. There will be the conversion from swamp cooler to refrigerated. I don't know if you can hear that thunder, but it makes me jump. And so it will be amenities like that. But we do have the official design package, and I can report to you that next month, we will have the VOK regular presentation, and I can ask them to give you a lot more detail at that time.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Leeper. Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Action item number four, approval of construction apprenticeship provisions.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
On the apprenticeships, this is including our, our students that are at the CCTE. Dan, was, can someone explain this to me on this?
So Mr. Bustillo, we've had many requests. You may recall the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and the El Paso Association of Contractors. They've all approached us about including an element related to apprenticeship programs.
Okay.
What we are doing prospectively, it's not effective retroactively, but for new contractors coming in or being awarded, they will get, when we evaluate their proposals, they will receive additional points if they have an approved or a valid apprenticeship program. And we've done this not only with our existing contractors, with the El Paso Association of Contractors, and the community to ensure that we were capturing those elements. It does not yet include any sort of preference for if they build in elements of our student population in the apprenticeship. But by default, they can already hire those students into an apprenticeship program. So if they have HVAC or one of those trades, then they're eligible to be hired in an apprenticeship program. And anyone submitting a proposal with an approved apprenticeship program would get additional points in their evaluation.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions on that? Not the action item number five, discussion and possible determination on process to fill board member vacancy. I think we covered that a little bit before. Action item number six, possible appointment to fill vacancy of board member represented by the District Three for the unexpired term. Then action item number seven, possible action to fill vacancy in any board officer position.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am.
I got, got this in a little late, I think, but didn't we vote on the process we're going to use for the, the filling of the, the position already?
Yes.
So does that need to be on, does this item need to be on the agenda?
No, that was placed there in the event that y'all felt uncomfortable making that decision. Now that you made that decision, we will ignore it.
Go ahead, Mr. Stuckey.
Uh, thank you, Board President Ochoa. Actually,
Actually, that, as we discussed earlier, the board can, if it wishes, on Wednesday, can simply make an appointment at that time. Or if, or if the board prefers to go through more of a process where it solicits letters of interest and so forth, and possibly has interviews and so forth. That was what that agenda item would do, would be allow the board to make that decision. Do you do it now?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I was actually speaking of the one that, about the methodology and not the appointment itself.
Right. But even if you do it by appointment, you still would need to decide, are we going to do it, are we going to do it now? Or are we first going to have a process of soliciting letters of interest and so forth? That will be a decision point for the board on, on Wednesday night. And it can go, it could decide at that time to go either way.
Mr. Soffe, just to be, you said when we were discussing that, that we could go either way. We're bound by any legal action as to what process we should use.
That's correct. You've already, you've already made the decision to do it by appointment. That, that decision's already been made. And so you have agenda items for your meeting on Wednesday that would allow you to go ahead and make the appointment on Wednesday if you're ready to do so. Or on the other hand, if you prefer to first do some kind of application or interview process, then you can make that decision on Wednesday as well. So it'll be up to the board on Wednesday. But you've already decided to do it by appointment.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that's all the action items. If there's no other comments or questions, push it to a chair.
So moved.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. See you Wednesday.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.